To our June council meeting. I would like to ask councillor Brett James to please do our welcome to country.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe and fellow councillors. Firstly, I pay my respects to our ancestors. I acknowledge your elders, both past, present and emerging. I would like to acknowledge the Yorta Yorta Nations and all its people whose land we meet on today. So on behalf of the respected Elders Council, the sixteen family groups and the eight respected tribes who share in the status of traditional owners, I say a very warm welcome to this wonderful land and waterways. Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe.
Thank you very much, councillor James. We Greater Shepparton City Council acknowledge the Yorta Yorta peoples of the land, which now comprise as Greater Shepparton. We pay our respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of our ancestors. Item three, privacy notice, this public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the other official units of this meeting. The government's principles, item four, council considers that the recommendations contained in this agenda gives effect to the overarching governance principles stated in section nine slash two of the Local Government Act 2020. These principles are listed in the agenda from one to nine. Apologies, we have Neil received. Item six, declarations of conflict of interest. Do any councils have any conflicts of interest they need to declare? I need to declare a conflict of interest on item ten point one. Recommendation to endorse nominees for induction into the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame. My daughter Emma has been nominated. Councillors, on page seven, there's confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting as a recommendation there. Would a council like to move motion, please? Councillor speaks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move as a motion that the minutes of the eighteenth May twenty twenty one council meeting and first June twenty twenty one additional council meeting as circulated be confirmed.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor James, all those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Item ten point one, I will now leave the chair and I ask Deputy Mayor to please take the chair. Thank you, councillor Priestley.
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Okay, councillors, I'd like to direct you now to page eight of the agenda. Item ten point one, recommendation to endorse nominees for the induction into the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame. Would a council like to move a motion? Thank you, councillor Dobson. Councillor Dobson, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. On page eight, the recommendation is that the council endorse the following nominees as recommended by the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame Advisory Committee for induction into the three levels of the Greater Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame, namely the Hall of Fame, the Honour Roll and the Junior Honour Roll at the induction ceremony to be held on Friday sixth of August. Thereafter, there are twenty six names, I don't really need to read them all out, they're in the agenda. So, thank you councillor Priestley, I'll move that.
Thank you councillor Dobson, do I have a second to please? Thank you councillor Brophy. Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you councillor Priestley. Firstly, can I just pay a tribute to the community members who made up the bulk of the committee, along with councillor Brophy himself, with Don Kilgour, Margot Costelainen, Daryl Butcher, David Quinn and Peter Holland. They've met on a number of occasions to nut this out, to receive the applications and to put them into the order that they are now. I'd also like to pay tribute from the council staff of David Booth and Belinda Conan, especially Belinda, who did a lot of groundwork in doing all this. This has been going for quite some time now and the public call for nominations took place in November of last year. And there was a strong interest across all categories, including some who are still who are still current, still sidebottom, for example, beat Melbourne Football Club last night, which still sticks. And so there are a number of people there that are in your are in your agenda. There are three categories, the the Sports Hall of Fame category, mainly people residing in Greater Shepparton for at least ten years and participated in the sport in Greater Shepparton for at least five. The Shepparton Sports Hall of Fame Honour Roll resided in the city of Greater Shepparton for at least ten years and participated. And last but not least, the Junior Honour Roll category. The nominee and their family resided within the city of Greater Shepparton for at least five years. That's all I needed to say at the moment and I'd be happy to happy to have that voted on.
Thank you councillor Dobson, councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you Deputy Mayor Priestley. Just reiterating what councillor Dobson had said in regards to the nomination and the process regarding that. And hats off to the advisory committee who spent an awful amount of time on this particular induction process. Twenty six nominees, nineteen female, sorry nineteen male, seven female. But overall, if this is accepted, then what will go into the honour rolls, both the honour roll, the junior honour roll and the sporting hall of fame. There'll be seventy five inductees all up, which will make up about thirty female and forty five males. It's getting a little bit closer to the fifty fifty, if you like. The sixth of August will be the induction ceremony, hopefully everything goes well COVID wise. And certainly just nominate, just looking at some of the sports there, certainly AFL basketball, cycling and cricket, for which we're known for, but a few notables there, Tom Sparks, who's incredible squash player. And the rate that he's going, he'll be, you know, winning the masters championships at a hundred and ten. If he keeps going on the way he's going. Stacey Collier and Terry Cozier, Lorne Bowles gets a mention. And of course, the late Jared Lyle, you know, persistence, resilience and tenacity. And, you know, never give up and that's really what sport here in the Golden Valley is about, about never giving up. And, you know, other ones that have been nominated there, which you don't often hear much about. Volleyball, David Waite in regards to that, hockey, of course, with Matt Higgins and in the junior honour roll, Connor Holland. But also in the in regards to some sports like the dance sport, young Sam Brown. And also in sport aerobics, which of course Emma O'Keefe is a world champion at as well. So it's robust, it's a very competitive group. And hats off to all those who've been nominated going forward.
Thank you councillor Brophy, would anybody like to speak against the motion? Would anybody like to speak for the motion? Councillor Sally.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Priestley. Yeah, look, obviously backing up the comments that both councillor Dobson and Brophy have mentioned. And obviously congratulating those that will be inducted for obviously their their different sectors in regards to junior honour roll, the honour roll nominees and obviously the Hall of Fame as well. So well done, a variety of individuals have been recognised across a vast array of sports. So congratulations and also a massive congratulations and well done to the Hall of Fame committee that have obviously worked so hard after some pretty trying circumstances, obviously facing the difficulties of COVID last year and trying to organise this event. Fingers crossed it will take place. So congratulations and well done to all involved. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? Okay, if there's no further comments, then we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. If somebody could ask Mayor O'Keefe to return to the room.
Thank you so much. We'll now go to item eleven point one on page fourteen, community vision statement. There's also a recommendation on page fourteen. Councillor like to move a motion, please councillor Dula. What would you like to move? You're on mute.
Yes. I would like to move the motion that that is printed on page fourteen of the agenda. Do you want me to read this? I can actually.
I may give you two points, that would be great, thank you.
Yes, so the motion is that the council note the efforts of the community panel and thank them for their work today and adopt the community vision statement. A diverse, vibrant and connected community valuing accessible opportunities for everyone. We adapt and respond in a way that is innovative, sustainable and accountable. We acknowledge where we have been and look forward to where we are going. Together, we are greater.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor James? Want to second that? Thank you councillor Dula, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. So this community vision has been developed by our community as a as a part of our legislative requirement under the Local Government Act twenty twenty. And deliberative engagement process was followed for the development of Greater Shepparton's community vision. I think this was important to ensure that this consultation process, actually it empowers our community to formulate their community vision. So that's great. And we had, and an expression of interest was called from the community members to join a community panel for developing this community vision. I would say that we received a lower than expected number of EOI responses, but that's all right. Out of those responses, a panel of thirty members was selected randomly. Now councillors were also introduced to the panel and I would like to say that I was really pleased with the quality and calibre of all the community panel members. And I also, as a councillor, we also got this opportunity to observe one of the workshops where the panel members were, they exchanged ideas and discussed among themselves various outcomes for their community vision. So that was a very interesting experience. Now, the community vision before us is 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 easy to understand and it reflects the aspirations of our community. And of course, to a great degree, it is in line with my own personal vision for the region, for this region. So it's glad to see that this vision is here now, it's a community vision and it will guide us in the development of our four-year council plan. And we'll ensure that as a community, we make positive gains in all areas, whether it's social, whether it's economic, whether it's environment benefits. So on that note, I would like to say thanks to all the panel members for their comments, their passion and energy that they brought to this process. And also would like to say thanks to the guest speakers who spoke to these, to the community panel members and they shared their insights with the panel members. And last but not least, thanks to our consultants, the Mosaic Lab, for facilitating these workshops with a very high degree of professionalism, I would say. And and they really focused on their work in order to finish this whole exercise within the time constraints. So well done to everyone and I'm very pleased to see the community vision that has been put forward for us. Thanks.
Thank you very much councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you Mayor O'Keefe. I'll basically just back you up what councillor Abdullah said. You know, can I firstly say a big thank you to the community panel for their work so far in developing our all-important community vision statement. And also acknowledge all community members who demonstrated an expression of interest in the community panel too as well. We had a large number of community members applying for the panel. So I'd like to say thank you to them too as well, which is great and very encouraging to see that that members of our community had put their hands up. It's also very encouraging, extremely important for this council to hear what the community's needs are. And more to that too as well, it's, we had a diverse representation on that community panel from all sectors of the community. And and very encouraging to see the actual young voices, our young leaders involved in that community panel as well. And again, well done to Mosaic Lab too as well. So for convening that that community vision panels. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Dobson?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. It was a pleasure to be with the community group on Thursday night. I must admit that I approached it with some trepidation, not knowing what we were going to find. But there was a real interest from the from the panel members on 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 what we, what our visions were and what the council's visions were and how we could integrate the two. And there was, from all over the community, I mean, the youngest, one of the members wanted to know about social housing for eighteen-year-olds and how can we give some more money to the Shepparton Theatre Arts Group? And that was just one person who had, you know, a variety of issues. But and we'd really, it'd be great if we kept this panel going and were able to meet with them again on more on a social basis so that we could, I suppose, go together in doing what we do best for the shepherds community. Well done from Mosaic Lab, very very well organised, I've got to say, and great representation from councillors, councillors, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Just in regards to that reiterating what everybody else has said, but the fact of bringing forward a community vision can be can be full with a bit of danger in the sense that we could have nine councillors all come up with a community vision and have nine different visions. So to have a panel of community representatives being able to get together and to come up with a collective vision, I think they've done very well in short space of time, so I congratulate them on that. Again, very impressed last Thursday when we zoomed in and we were put off into different groups. It was a bit like speed dating, going from one group to the other and then asking us a number of questions and really probing the councillors. Also finding out what was really on their mind. They're very passionate, they're very motivated and I was very impressed. It's only a start, there's still a little way to go, but onwards and upwards with this.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. As stated, it's a community vision, it's a new state requirement under the new twenty twenty act, trying to bring the focus of government back to the community. It might seem like a bit of a motherhood statement when you read it like that, but it will set the framework for future strategies, particularly in our council planning. It's new for all councils and it may take a little bit of time to adjust to this. And some of us are still struggling with where this vision sits alongside our own aspirations as elected councillors. The panel's obviously not elected and the sample size wasn't quite large enough to get a truly representative community group. There were about seventy eight people who responded to the EOI request. But I can't really fault the work that they've done so far. They've had this opportunity for really intensive streamlined input into what 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 happens in council, probably more so than ourselves at this point, which is remarkable. And I hope they keep up the good work. The only thing I'd say is that because we only had seventy eight people out of our entire municipality respond, perhaps if we wanted a representative sample, we could do our own internal work and do it by a randomised draw or ballot and actually tap people on the shoulder and ask, are you interested in doing this, rather than having them respond to an EOI request, which generally only reaches the people who are actively interested in council already. Whereas we should be trying to find those hard-to-reach people. So yeah, so far so good, looking forward to it and hopefully it comes with some really good outcomes.
Thank you very much councillor Summer. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Just prior to going to the vote, I would like to say thank you to the panel. And last week we did get to speak to them, but for those that were involved in that. And I do know that a lot of hours went into that statement, it might look like a small paragraph. But I know that they took that task extremely, you know, to a high level and they made sure that they had, you know, the in-depth conversations that they needed to have. So thank you again for that effort. I know it was a very big effort and much appreciated. We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page seventeen, item eleven point two, the council plan twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, quarter three progress report. There's a recommendation there on page seventeen, would a council like to move the motion, please? Councillor Summer?
I'll move that the council note the council plan twenty twenty to twenty one, quarter three progress report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Priestley? Second that one councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
I guess this is a report card to the community about how we're tracking on a council plan that we built four years ago. And in some areas, we're tracking okay, in some areas, we've had a large hit due to COVID and other external problems. And in some areas, we have lots of room for improvement. So we've practically tracking well in about thirty five of our fifty two actions. They're the ones that are on target, thirty five out of fifty two. So it's nothing to brag about, but what it does show is some gaps and perhaps some opportunities that we can look at, perhaps shave down some things, enhance some things, really put some more thought into it coming into our next council plan so that we're in this spot four years from now or whenever it is. We can be looking at fifty two out of fifty two actions being on target or thirty out of thirty if we have to shave them back. But I'm just hoping our resources are being put to where they were intended when we first embarked on this journey.
Thank you very much councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. So just echoing to some extent councillor Summer's comments, we've got thirty five of those fifty two items on track. It's probably a little deceptive in the sense that of those items that are that are not perhaps where they should be, when you go through and carefully look at those, there's quite a large number of them. You can't reasonably expect council to have hit their target during the COVID era. They might be things like the amount of outdoor participation or the amount of economic activity or whatever driven by council events. So there's there's more than half of those items that are lagging behind the target that are really, it's not a fair race to say that we are not on track because of what's happened during that COVID period.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page twenty, item eleven point three, the May twenty twenty one monthly financial report. There's also a recommendation on page twenty, would council like to move a motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, I would like to move the motion that the council receive and note the May twenty twenty one monthly financial report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a count, a second to please? Councillor Dobson? Councillor Dula, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you. Very briefly, this is a financial report for the month, for the for the month ending May twenty twenty one. It is tracking well. We note that the council adopted the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one quarter three adopted forecast with an accounting surplus of eight point two seven million, which is basically roughly three point zero five million dollars more than the twenty 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 one adopted budget. The capital works programme of fifty four point four five million, it's forecast to be spent during the during this financial year. And it is a reduction of seven point two seven million dollars from the from the adopted budget. Obviously, some of the some of the reasons are beyond our control and and the reduction is mainly because its capital works of worth seven point two seven million dollars have been carried forward to the next financial year. Looking at the financial indicators, they are looking looking satisfactory because, for instance, loan and borrowings are working capital and asset renewal related indicators, they are all within the target range, so that is satisfactory. Asset renewal and upgrade as a percentage of depreciation was actually forecast in quarter in quarter three as equivalent to ninety two point four percent. And I noticed that year to date, we have done seventy percent. So, which means that in the next couple of weeks, it should reach it should reach that ninety two point four percent. Our income statement is showing all the notes where we have received, where we have seen positive variances and negative variances, so the details are there. I note I note that employee costs and materials and services, they have shown positive variances, which basically means that we have spent less than what we had budgeted for. So yeah, so many details are there, but overall, all tracking well. So that's all that I would like to say.
Thank you very much councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, I too noted that employee and materials costs were down mainly for COVID reasons. We couldn't spend the money. There's a bit of capital expenditure, as councillor Abdullah said, has going to be carried over. The cash flow, I note the net decrease in cash flow of eleven point four million over the period. That's really not a great problem, but the one I really like is our current assets are fifty two point five versus current liabilities of thirty one million. And for any business, that's a very good cash, that's a very good asset ratio to have, especially in current assets. We're very, very liquid. And I would just like to congratulate Matt Sharp and his team for putting together such a comprehensive report. You've got to put away a fair bit of time to read the whole thing and and councillor Abdullah has really summarised it very well.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Just some some brief comments, I guess, on the change in our position over the last month since we last had a report. And that these financials run us through to the end of May. And at the end of May, we just started going back into a lockdown. So you were starting to see some some improvements from some of the things that we were suffering with as a result of the COVID period. So a modest improvement in our bad debts, our statutory charges and our user charges combined is about a five hundred thousand dollar pickup in that month. So things were starting to come back together with us and and I think you'd argue in the in the broader community. One of the things that's starting to impact council and many organisations is it is a tightening labour market. And so there's a high vacancy rate at council and we're having difficulty filling some of our jobs. So what you've seen there is our employee costs have drifted below budget by about one point two million as we struggle to fill some of those positions. So that's just a summary of some of the things that have happened over the last month.
Thank you very much. Would a councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page twenty three, item eleven point four, the privacy policy. There is also a recommendation on page twenty three, would a council like to move a motion, please? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'd like to move the motion, move the recommendation eleven point four on page twenty three to adopt the revised privacy policy.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Brophy? You'd like to second that? Councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Council is committed to the to the Privacy and Data Protection Act and the Health Records Act. Both of these acts primarily focus on the collection of personal and health information, which is very important by the Victorian public sector and the local councils. In two thousand and seventeen, council adopted the private privacy policy guidelines under directions of the Office of Victorian Information Commissioner. It was further adopted and revised and was adopted in February two thousand and twenty. The policy stipulates that a review is required within six months of a general council election. There has been some minor changes made to this policy. These changes are in line with the Local Government Act in two thousand and twenty. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just very quickly, Mayor O'Keefe, just reiterating what councillor James had said, but there's only minor changes that have been made in really acknowledging the legislative changes and to improve the readability. That's all I have to say on it.
Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a council wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page twenty five, item eleven point five, freedom of information policy. There is also a recommendation on page twenty five. Would a council like to move a motion please? Council Spinks?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'd like to move a motion that the council adopt the revised freedom of information policy as attached to this report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councilor James? Council Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Only briefly to cover what is within the report, the executive summary. This policy is required to be reviewed within six months of a council election, so that's what we're doing. Changes have been very minor to acknowledge legislative changes, correct minor inaccuracies and improve readability.
Thank you. Council James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Yeah, just the, just it's previous policy. Mayor O'Keefe, it's just some changes have been made to reflect the updates, the Freedom of Information Act and the introduction of the Freedom of Information under professional standards. So and again, you know, we have to review that policy again within six months after a general election, which we are due now. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Would a council like to speak against the motion? Would a council like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page twenty seven, item eleven point six, Revenue and Rating Plan. There is also a recommendation on page twenty seven. Would a council like to move a motion? Council Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'd like to move the motion that the council adapts the Revenue and Rating Plan 2021 to 2025 as attached to this report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councilor Dobson? Council Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Well firstly, let's face facts, nobody likes paying or even talking about rates. So a revenue and rating plan is not a topic that people want to rush and talk about. But it is important because nobody enjoys paying the bill either. So in this revenue and rating plan, you've seen council adopt a zero percent increase in rates and the introduction of a new rate for derelict buildings. That really, I guess, given the election context and a fair bit of interest in focusing on the relatively high rates for our region, these might be seen as modest improvements, but I think you've got to look at this in context so that this has occurred at the same time that we've suffered close to a $6 million hit to revenue over the last couple of financial years in the COVID era. And that this provides us still a platform to continue to address the cost structure of the council. And this is happening, I guess, in a period of time where costs for councils generally are rising quite quickly. Construction costs, et cetera, are rising well above the rate of inflation. So a zero percent increase in that environment is not to be sneezed at. Just to turn briefly to the derelict building rating charge, which there's been some commentary about. I think this is a good innovation, but it's not a panacea. We're not going to see tomorrow that this makes this problem go away. But it's part of the toolkit as a, I guess, a local authority to try and improve the amenity of our city and make sure that those that are maybe not being considerate of their neighbors are given pause to reflect and encouraged to do something with the property that's causing damage to the amenity of the average citizen. There's probably about five or six, I think it is, other councils that have introduced this type of rating charge. And over a four or five year period, they've all seen an improvement in the number of properties to varying degrees, but the number of properties that fall into this category. So I think it's not something that's going to go bang and change the city overnight, but it is going to have a long term impact on the decision of landholders that have properties that are in a derelict state. It's important to point out that this does not apply to properties that are simply in maybe a bad state of repair. So it's genuinely derelict, properties that can't be inhabited, and we're looking to really target those precisely.
Thank you very much. Councilor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. And again, the zero increase in our rates this year, I think, would be a record. I can't remember when that ever happened again, although there will be some increase in evaluations of properties which may see and will see in some instances a change in the rate, the rate increase. And that's on the back of a number of our community members expressing that interest. The interesting thing about the purpose, and if I can just read, the purpose of the plan is to determine the most appropriate and affordable revenue and rating approach for Greater Shepparton City Council in conjunction with other income sources which will adequately finance the objectives in the council plan. And this is an exercise that takes more than a couple of days to put together. It doesn't set revenue targets for council, but it outlines the strategic framework and decisions that inform how council will go about calculating and collecting its revenues. When you look at the graph, it says that sixty four percent of our income will be from rates and charges, statutory fees and fines, three percent, user fees, and that's people like Aqua Moves and who use our ovals, et cetera, fifteen percent. Grants seventeen percent, and that's a very important part of our revenue stream of grants, and a lot of our capital works come to that. So rates are the most significant revenue source. As Councilor Priestley said, it's the one that nobody wants to talk about, but it's our major fundraising source. And in order to keep the community going and to have a good base, we must have a good rating strategy. So I commend this plan to councillors. And in doing so, again, I just ask that we think about the people who put it together. Great job. Well done.
Okay, thank you very much. Any council wish to speak against the motion? Councilwoman Summer?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Arguably, this is the most important plan that we have in this council, probably even more important than the draft budget because this impacts on how people pay rates and how much they pay and how equitable we are. I just feel like councillors haven't had enough engagement on the issue. This plan was presented to us last week. Yes, there was some community consultation with a really clever little electronic program on our website and Facebook page that encouraged people to be educated and have an informed decision. But again, there's a very low uptake there and there were people commenting who still didn't understand the municipal charge does not increase the rates at all, it just redistributes it. And I don't think there was enough consultation around the derelict building introduction as well. That's a little bit of a shock. So I like the zero percent rate rise. I never thought I'd see the day. It's so good to see this. Usually, we're given big red charts outlined with slashes through them saying compounded interest will be this much in ten years if we dare go below five percent. But since the rate caps come in, we've been finding efficiencies, we've been working it out and we've been managing to get back to some semblance of an actual business model where we need to be frugal. So zero percent rate rise, yay, well done. That's wonderful. As far as derelict buildings, the low rate of assessed properties across other comparable councils, and I'm talking like one or two under this charge, they assessed one or two. So I know we have good intentions on this, but I just have a feeling the outcomes won't be quite as we expect. In fact, there's probably going to be quite a bit of backlash and possibly a lot of legal bills in this matter. I haven't had a chance to go over how other councils have done it. So yeah, it's one year before it actually comes into play. So hopefully, all that will come out in the wash. When we ask for people to consult with us, they generally don't, and so we've done it. So now that we're doing it, I guess we have that year's grace where people can come back and offer their feedback. And if need be, we can reassess it again before we actually implement. I just don't feel like I've had enough input. Obviously, other councillors have had quite a bit of input behind the scenes. But as far as what's being presented to us on the surface, I do not feel comfortable with this plan as it stands. But I am very happy and supportive about the zero percent rate rise.
Thank you very much. Any council wish to speak for the motion? Council Brophy?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'd just like to reiterate what Councilor Priestley had said. And really, you know, rates and rating plan and that, it really isn't a sexy item when it comes to council matters. But it is, you know, it is a plan that is really important, as Councilwoman Summer pointed out, a very vital one. And it is a plan and it will be reviewed and will be changed accordingly as we go forward, always required. Very happy about the zero percent rate, base rate increase. It really sets a tone of understanding what the community expectation is balanced against what council commitments are. It's a balance of equilibrium, and I think we've hit the right tone on this particular one. And I do congratulate Matt Jarvis and his team in presenting what they have to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any council wish to speak against the motion? Would any council wish to speak for the motion? Councilwoman Abdullah?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I would, I agree whatever has been said by Councilor Priestley, Councilor Brophy. I just want to also highlight and acknowledge your comments, Councilwoman Summer, and to see that everybody is really pleased to see this zero percent rate increase. Basically, I just want to highlight that this is a revenue and rating plan. And as we have noticed that it is, that nearly sixty four percent of our revenue comes from rates. So I think it's very important for us as a council to actively seek other revenue sources other than rates. Because even, because only when we do that, we will be able to reduce the burden of rates on our community because we want to deliver more and more services, we want to expand the scope of services, we want to deliver to reach, you know, every part of our community. However, we also have to look at the financial constraints that council is working towards. So I really hope and I believe that council needs to actively pursue other sources of revenue such as grants and basically, you know, grants is one big source of revenue that can shift the burden of rates from our rate payers. So I just wanted to, you know, pass on this comment. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any council wish to speak for the motion? Council Priestley, would you like your right of reply?
No, thank you, Mayor O'Keefe.
We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page thirty, item eleven point seven, the fraud and corruption control policy. There is also a recommendation on page thirty. Would a council like to move a motion? Council Sally?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page thirty of the agenda, item eleven point seven, fraud and corruption control policy.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Council Spinks? Council Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Just a few things. Look, the policy is a high level document designed to obviously promote council's commitment to protecting council's assets and reputation through the effective management of fraud and corruption risk. Obviously summarizes the responsibilities and expectations of stakeholders and ensuring the reporting and investigation process for fraud and corruption are fair and consistent. There are a few changes made to the policy. The name of the policy changed from fraud and corruption policy to the fraud and corruption control policy. A new section was also added relating civil action for recovery and losses. And another really important one is that the scheduled review of this policy will now be realigned with the number of other policies that we review every four years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Mayor O'Keefe.
Any council wish to speak against the motion? Any council wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page thirty three, item eleven point eight, contracts awarded under delegation, May 2021. There is also a recommendation on page thirty three. Would a council like to move a motion please? Council James?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Yes, I'd like to move the recommendation eleven point eight on page thirty three. And that's contracts under delegation in May 2021. And I might read the recommendation out, Mayor. It's that the recommendations are that the council, one, note the contracts awarded under delegated authority by the chief executive officer. Number two, note the contracts awarded under delegated authority by a director. Number three, note the contracts awarded under delegated authority by a manager. And number four, note the request for tender advertised but not yet awarded. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? Councilwoman Summer? Council James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you again, Mayor O'Keefe. Yeah, there are some very important contracts in this current round of delegations. There's ten in total that have been awarded and evenly distributed across our communities as well. And there is a further ten tenders advertised currently being considered or approaching the closing dates. These tenders are predominantly in the Shepparton precinct, but the ones above that have been approved, Mayor O'Keefe, have been evenly distributed across our community, which is very pleasing to see as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
I guess I will. Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. It's, at first glance, it does look like these are quite hefty values. It's great to see such great projects, but I mean, on first glance, if you're not involved in the tender, it does seem excessive. Obviously, there's reasons behind it, but for example, two, three, no, two, one, three, two, which is the Shepparton and Eridh Zone Boundary Fencing, seventy six thousand eight hundred and eighty three dollars and forty cents. Now, that seems like a lot of money for fences. Rural Pool Inflatable Features, point two, one, one, five. So that's a lump sum for inflatable products. That's over $50,000. We've got water supply for the Botanic Gardens, which we're spending quite a bit out there at the moment. Seems to be going under the radar quite a bit. That's two oh nine four, and that's again over $55,000. So we delegate these things for a reason because larger projects obviously come with more accountability, they have more scrutiny. If we went through each one of these projects in detail, we'd be here until midnight every day. This is just the tip of the iceberg of what really happens, but it's great that we have this transparency where we're showing what's going on. And if we do have concerns or questions, we can delve in a little deeper and try and find out why it costs so much more for council than it does for everyone else. Although to date, I've never really had a satisfactory answer to that one. If we could figure that out, we'd have solved the world's problems. But I'm happy to endorse it because that's what's happened. We are simply noting that these are the intended contracts and intended awarded contracts.
Any council wish to speak against the motion? Any council wish to speak to the motion? Councilor Dobson?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. There are two issues that I'd like to take up. One is that the functional and detailed design of the upgrade in Horton Street, Shepparton, eighty, nearly eighty two thousand dollars. There's a lot of work being done around the Super School precinct at the moment, and Greater Shepparton is doing its part. And there will be a lot more to do to ensure that traffic management around the area is done satisfactorily. Councilor Summer mentioned the Botanic Gardens. Can I just elaborate on that? For many years, they've struggled out there, the committee have struggled to keep some of the plants watered, especially during the very dry seasons there two or three years back. And what this fifty five and a half thousand dollars will do is that it's bringing, the water mains there actually, and it brings the water into the site, and that'll achieve two things. One, it'll give some watering to some of the plants that need it. And the second thing is we'll be able to start looking at toilets and all that sort of thing. While we're on the Botanic Gardens, can I just say, Councilor O'Keefe, that this is a Botanic Garden, it's not a park per se. Whilst a lot of people use it for their own, for their own fitness and what have you, it is a place to go and see where we actually maintain and grow plants that are indigenous to our general area. And it's going to become, if not now, it's going to become in the future, a a great tourist attraction as well as doing wonderful things for the, for the environment. So they're two things that I picked up on. And I was also, councillor Summer talked about inflatable parks. This is the new sort of bouncing pearl stuff, which I wish was around when I was a kid. But I've seen it happen and they're a lot of fun. So well done again and plenty of work being done within the municipality. And I might just say in, at the end of this, that the money has been spread throughout the municipality, not just in one area.
Thank you very much. Would a council like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page thirty-eight, item eleven point nine, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, Greater Shepparton City Council budget. There's also a recommendation on page thirty-eight, thirty-nine and page forty. Would a council like to move a motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. I would like to move the recommendation on pages thirty-eight to forty as a motion. It's a long motion, so I won't read it.
You very much. Do I have a second to please? Would someone like to second? Councillor Brophy? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. I would like to start by saying that I'm very pleased to present the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two council budget. I would also like to, like to thank our council staff and the executive leadership team for the completion of this budget process. I really appreciate their diligence, their hard work, their attention to details, especially when it comes to councillors' feedback and their inputs, while methodically working towards a very tight timeline. So thanks to them. Thanks also to the twenty-eight submitters who took time to send their budget submissions. Seven, seven of them also presented to council in a Zoom meeting. So I commend them and I commend their spirit of active participation in civic matters. In context of COVID nineteen challenges, this budget has recognized that our community deserved and expected a less burden of rates on them. And responding to councillor Summers and councillor Dobson's earlier comments that this has never happened before. So yes, it did take a pandemic to bring this change. A zero percent rate rise in the general rates revenue is the demonstration of council's recognition of the impact of the pandemic on our community. Now, it's a budget that will make capital works investment, investments of seventy-one point eight million dollars in Greater Shepparton. This capital investment will not only bring new and improved infrastructure, such as roads, footpaths, outdoor furniture and trees, et cetera. But at the same time, it will also create jobs and it will help our local economy to revitalize during the construction period of these, these infrastructure facilities and also during the operational phases of these sites. The capital works program will be funded by council's operations together with our external grants and also borrowing of twelve million dollars, which has been acknowledged in the budget. So as I've said before, I do think that we need to strive for a bigger portion of capital works funding from the state and federal government grants so that we can reduce the burden from our rate payers. And, and we also need to continue to have responsible borrowings that match with our capacity to pay. One more point is that I feel that the distribution of capital works investments in this budget across Shepparton and other towns could have been better on the principles of fairness and equity. And we have talked about this and we have all agreed that we will be working together and continue to work and improve on the capital funding allocation model for other towns in future budgets so that we can alleviate the feeling of Shepparton-centric capital works program for these, for our towns. Having said that, I am also delighted that this budget has given favorable consideration to what our community had asked for through their submissions, such as increasing funding.
Would you like an extension, Councillor?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thanks. So I'm pleased to see that, that the budget has responded very favorably and positively to some of the community submissions, including our community neighbourhood houses, additional funding support to them, our local sports clubs, fee waivers for them, and also allocation of, of budget for Merterson Men's Shed. The budget also recognizes council's aspirations in the declaration of climate emergency and a twenty thirty zero carbon emission target for the organization. And various, various initiatives have been, have been included in this budget to work towards our, our pledge for the, for our climate. Now, of course, the constraints that this budget has been prepared, some of the constraint and constraints under which this budget has been prepared includes, number one, overall, the level of operating grants is projected to decrease by forty-one point seven percent. So which is equivalent to twelve point four four million dollars compared to our last financial, our last financial year. And also, while the budget has, has seen some improvement, is going to see some improvement on our, on the user fee income, but it is still below our pre-COVID levels. So that was another constraint. And again, while it is a gain for the community that, you know, talking about this zero percent rate rise, but the reality is that now it is a constraint, it's a financial constraint on, for council to deliver the same level of services with a zero percent rate rise. And however, I'm very confident that with the cost efficiencies that, that have been identified, council will continue to, to do that, to deliver all the services that our community expects and our community needs. Quickly, in terms of future budgets, I just want to highlight that I would like to aim for a return to net surplus in future years for financial sustainability of the organization. Also, an equitable allocation of capital works program for towns other than Shepparton. It would be good to see in future budgets. And yeah, so overall, you know, the council has also, is also sort of working towards continually identifying cost efficiencies in its operations, which is really good to see. So overall, I'm, I'm satisfied with the budget. And once again, thanks and well done to everyone who was involved in the preparation of this budget. And I support this budget. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Keefe, can I just get a point of clarification? Sorry, just whether or not the support for neighbourhood houses is included in the budget? I just can't read it in that dot point at the.
Yes, it is. It is. Yeah, it is, it is.
Can I just get, sorry, can I get the CEO to say that it is included in the budget?
Okay, so it is included in the budget. Five thousand additional for each of the five community houses.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Take two. So in regards to, I mean, I could talk forever on the budget because we have been briefed extensively on it. And it is, is something that is so vital in going forward in really planning out where we go from here. We've scrutinized each department as it's come through, each item we've gone through, had a look at what efficiencies can be made on it, et cetera. I still tend, tend to think that there are probably some areas that we can have additional efficiencies on and we probably will in future there. But, you know, we have looked at each budget line. And in regards to that, as councillor Abdullah pointed out, the twenty thirty zero emissions, there's a, a reference to each of the particular areas of the budget and how that affects it. And that's very good to see that that's now in that particular budget for us. In terms of capital funding, and you're absolutely right in regards to councillor Abdullah, you know, we do need to have a lens over the fairness of that across the municipality. It is swings and roundabouts, but because if you look over a five-year period perhaps then, you know, certain areas get funding depending on what their project is when it comes through. But certainly we need to make sure that we keep our, a lens over all of that in regards to it. Can I say to the public submitters who came before us and put in their submissions to the budget? Thank you for that. And you can see that we didn't just ignore everything that you've put through. We've actually put a number of the, your submissions through into the budget, in particularly in regards to the sporting clubs and making sure that, you know, the other facilities that they have and the rates that they pay or the rental that they pay on that is reduced in regards to, particularly over the COVID period and through until September this year. That's going to help an awful lot of clubs, particularly the winter sports in regards to that, lighting, et cetera. We're also investigating the lighting in regards to the Shepparton Skate Park. We had a number of submitters in, that have put in for that. And councillor Summer, yes, definitely the neighbourhood houses, five thousand dollars for increase on top of what they already get. They are so vital to our community. They really are the salt of our community, you know, in terms of what they provide in each of those particular communities as well. And the Mertersons Men's Shed, really happy to see that come into fruition as well. And it is so, so surely sought after. They're in a really small environment there at the moment. For them to be able to now look at bigger premises and be able to accommodate the, the projects that they do within their community, hats off to that. So many things I could discuss in that, but I'm sure other councillors have notes that they want to make as well. So well done in putting that budget together and well done councillors in really scrutinizing it.
Thank you very much. Any council wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. I'd just like to briefly note that maybe this is a part of being one of the new councillors. Maybe it's not like this every year, but it certainly feels like this budget swept upon us and is suddenly here. And you tend to just carry on a lot of, you know, historical projects and these sort of things, which is of course important and I imagine we'll have our own in future years. But in terms of not being able to mention something about it, I felt it was important. Does this budget really reflect, you know, the needs of today's community and the things that we represent as councillors? I don't know if I could say one hundred percent yes. But however, I would like to say that within the next twelve months, we will certainly have our heads much further around this. We will have a new access and inclusion plan in place. We will have a twenty thirty zero emissions plan in place. And I very much look forward in twelve months' time to seeing what the next budget looks like and if it better reflects some of these changes that are coming through. The other comment I'd like to make is I'm still not convinced completely about the municipal charge. And I think the fact that seven or eight months into a council term, I'm still not convinced, maybe explains why it's so hard to explain to the community about what it is and why it's important, if it's important. However, on the flip side, on a much more positive note, I would also like to thank all of the people who put forward budget submissions. I think it is absolute proof in the pudding that if you don't ask, then you don't know. They, all of these people who came in and chatted with us about your projects, you really put forward exactly what you care about as community members. And I do not think you can value that highly enough. Next year, you know, I want to see way more people putting their hand up and letting us know because that's genuinely how we find out that you really care about it. I mean, if you look at the number of submissions we got about skate, it's just overwhelming. The people who use it and the people who care about it. So I very much look forward to seeing some lighting going up there. The community houses getting their extra funding is incredible. And I know they'll do incredible things for their various communities. And it just goes to show that when the community connect with us, we really can make some change happen. So I just want to thank everybody who put their hand up, put their voices forward and put the effort in to do it. And I certainly, this budget's good, but I think next budget will be better.
Very much. Any council wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Saly?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Look, obviously fellow councillors have made some very valid points and added a fair bit of detail to it. So I just think I'll sort of speak a bit more specifically on my own experience as a new councillor. Councillor Sam Spinks added a bit of detail there as well. So, and it has been an interesting process, obviously, to balance the expectations of all involved, you know, exec, my fellow councillors and most importantly, the community. But as a number of councillors have mentioned, you know, we had a, a number of community members present at our budgets missions two weeks ago. And it's great that we've been able to offer some financial support towards their requests. It was just in total, just over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional was added to that. So that's great. And, you know, the, the good old saying, if you don't ask, you don't get. So I really encourage community between now and, and next year. Our director of finance, Chris Totsel and Matt Jarvis are probably blocking their ears as we say this. But there's, it's probably going to be a long night, that night for our further budget submissions. But I guess adding to that, we've only really had a good three to four months, in my opinion, to sort of work through this budget, get the detail that's relevant, to be able to sit here tonight to hopefully endorse it. I mean, I, I think we've started okay. There's no question about that. And hearing from previous councillors, we're, we're definitely heading in a good direction. So that's a positive note as well. But can we do things better? Absolutely. So as councillor Spinks mentioned there, I'm really looking forward to seeing how things evolve over the next twelve months into our next budget. Clearly, our council plan as well will influence that quite a bit. So yeah, really exciting twelve months ahead and looking forward to working with everyone to keep improving on the efficiencies that we need to have in place to deliver better for our community.
Thank you very much. Any council wish to speak against the motion? Lady councillor Summer?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Some really great commentary, others particularly the new councillors. I hope nobody takes an objection personally because I know a lot of work's gone into this, but it's very rare when I actually would pass a budget without being opposed. And again, it's for basically the same reasons as usual. All the way through the budget, we talk about equity and fairness, yet that municipal charge still remains. And I know we call it a minimum charge, but under the Act, it's still called an administrative fee. But that fee is not used for anything at all. It just gets sucked back into general revenue, which means there's less to pay overall, which means the higher rated properties pay less percentage on their rates, where everyone else gets a base charge that pulls that percentage down. And it is so complex. I can't explain it clearly, which is probably how it's gotten to this point. And people still have a misconception that the municipal charge adds to our rates when it doesn't. That is five million dollars redistributed. It's not actually added. We would still get that amount of money, but we wouldn't be slugging people on the lower end for people who benefit on the higher end. It's purely ideological and it's very hard for me to accept any budget that has that, particularly when so many councils don't have it at all. We just seem to accept it. And the other thing is this cultural and recreational rate that we've put to certain ratable properties that collect revenue through gambling. I really don't know how in this day and age that's accepted. I do believe we need to look closer at that. And I'm very pleased that there's been an indication from quite a few councillors who are quite happy and encouraging looking into this so that perhaps at our next budget, it will reflect community expectations a little clearer. Because gambling rips so much money out of our economy. It destroys families, social problems, domestic violence, poverty, all the rest of it. I just don't see why we would be offering any kind of government support to anyone who's profiting off gambling. And the other thing is the borrowings. Once again, we have tacked at the bottom here authorized borrowings of twelve million during the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, towards the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two capital works program. We did this last budget for ten million dollars and it's gone up. Obviously, all that money was spent in the last budget, or so I'm told. It was spent. So assumingly, this will also be spent. It is not allocated to anything, but under the Act, we can put a number of borrowings down in our budget and we don't necessarily have to be accountable for it. Now, I don't know if this is going to happen every year, but for me, financial sustainability is not borrowing.
Time. Okay. The CEO just wants to.
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. I need to clarify for that. The borrowings are actually listed in the budget document and listed against specific projects.
The list, okay. Well, that goes to show how much.
Did you want an extension, councillor Saly?
No, no, I think I've said enough, but thank you.
Okay. Any council wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Dobson?
Yeah, I just want to point a couple of things out in regard to state government levies. In fact, the landfill levy on June, first June two twenty-one is increasing by nine, nearly twenty dollars per tonne or sixty percent. And the budget's got to look at. And the budget's got to look at an increase in the EPA level. These are the sorts of things that quietly impact on all parts of our community, whether it's residential or whether it's commercial or industrial. And it's one of those things where, again, in my view, is cost shifting and making it harder and harder for regional governments, especially in Victoria, to keep their head above water. But in saying that, we've got a bat on. I just want to look at an amount of, a small amount of 51,000 dollars, which is a user fee reduction. I think that's magnificent. And that comes about, as mentioned before, by some public consultation. And one of the good things that I saw the other day was that the people in the South End of Shepparton will soon be able to have a walking track that connects them through the Botanic Gardens into the CBD of Shepparton and over to the Flats, which is over on the Galvan River. So nearly 250,000 to that. Now, that makes Shepparton a more livable city. And that's one of the reasons why some people want to come and live here because of our health and our environment in which to live, to live. And so some of those things are very important. I was very impressed with some of the responses from the public submissions. The skate park, for example, got a good hearing, but also the user charges for our sporting fields. And one of the great things we talked about this morning was the Murchison Men Shed. There's an allocation in the budget for the start of work down there to make Murchison even a better place to live than what it is now. And men's sheds are becoming an integral part of the community. And they do more than just entertain people. They make sense for the community and they do a lot of work for charity. So there's lots in it. Some's good and some's bad. But overall, it's got to be a balanced document and it's always best when there are winners, when some are for and some are against. So you know you've got a good document. So thank you, Mayor Keefe.
You very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Just, councillor Presley?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. So lots of good commentary around the budget. I guess I just want to frame the fact that this budget is occurring before we finalised this group of councillors' new plan, four-year plan. So, you know, to some extent, we're hemmed in and delivering this budget in the context of the previous council that I think the organisation's doing a good job and delivering good services and considering what it can do to be efficient. But if we cast our minds back to the election and then forward to the next council plan, there's nine councillors sitting around the table that have got lots of stuff that they want to get done. So I think what you're going to see is a lot of work in these coming few months, looking at ways that we can, A, pull cost out of the business in going forward so that then we've got money to put into the projects, the ideas and the things that councillors want to do, and also delivering an affordable council. So it's great to see that there's some commentary in the document about operational efficiencies. And if I was to have my ten cents, there'll be a whole lot more talk about that in the council plan and the documents that we're going to see in the future. So thank you.
Very much. Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Prior to going to councillor Dula's offer of right of reply, I'd just like to make one comment, just that we should be very proud, I think, of this budget at the moment. We've just gone through a most incredible experience as far as the community being financially impacted. So to be able to have a document that's still meeting all our services, doing as much as we can as far as listening to our community and the amazing projects we have ahead of us, considering we just had a pandemic and we're right in the middle of it. I think we should be all feeling very proud. We've been able to get where we've been able to get, including the zero rate increase. So I'm very proud of what we're actually looking at today. Councillor Dula, would you like your right of reply?
Yes, please. Thank you. Very briefly, I, first of all, thanks to councillor Summer and councillor Spinks for presenting their point of view. If I can briefly address some of them. Yes, to start with, I do understand that for new councillors, it could, it probably was an overwhelming process. But the reality is that every year we work towards a very tight timeframe. And, but the positive part is that our council staff and the whole executive leadership team, they provide huge support to councillors and we work very closely. So I'm sure that in the next round, you will perhaps feel a bit better in terms of managing this process. But I do understand that this process was a bit overwhelming in terms of time, timeframes. Secondly, the point we, it was argued that whether this budget reflects 100% of community needs. Perhaps not, perhaps yes. But as councillor Presley has also highlighted, that this budget has been prepared before we have seen the council plan. So it's an order, it's a reverse order. But hopefully in our next budget, it will be based on the council plan, which will be developed. But even in this round, you know, community is, again, it's like, it's not a homogeneous group. So maybe it's not reflecting 100% of my needs, but it is reflecting, you know, some parts of other communities' needs. So overall, we are basically, what we are trying to do here is to, it's a balancing act, you know, how to present a budget which satisfies our overall community needs. So, and then again, councillor Summer, in response to your point about municipal charge, I think this is not the first time that we are talking to each other about this particular point. But I think it's fair to say that enough information was given to everybody and councillors have had the chance to understand and also to the community through the information that was available on the website. Yes, it can be made better. It can be, our consultation process can improve. However, the video clip that was there, I think it explained pretty well how this municipal charge works. But look, I'm happy for us to continue this debate and at some point, who knows, we may make a different decision in terms of municipal charges. And then again, if in terms of 12 million dollars borrowing, councillor Summer, I would just like to point out that this is not something that has, is being done, you know, with some disregard to any financial principles. Our financial, our responsible borrowing is one of our financial management principles. It is acknowledged and it is included in our rating and revenues plan, revenue and rating plan, which we have just endorsed. So it is clearly mentioned that responsible borrowing is one of the principles of our financial management. So that's what I would like to say in terms of, yes, we all want to do better and let's hope for a better one next time.
Okay, thank you, councillor Dula. Councillor Summer?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was introducing new information, but I just wanted to say our role is to ensure that we abide by our own policies. And that question is quite relevant in terms of what the policy says. We can't just assume the policy is going to take care of itself. That's our job.
We're actually not off the actual item of 12.1, so we'll need to continue please with the meeting. Okay. Peter would like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. If I could just acknowledge the community input into the budget as well. Very good submissions this year and we hope for more next year, as others have said. Can I acknowledge the councillors and their input into the budget this year, particularly new councillors? It is a complex process and just to learn the process in a short period of time is difficult. So acknowledge all the councillors' input and you will be better prepared next year. But particularly, could I acknowledge Chris Titezal and Matt Sharp and Ollie's finance team who do a magnificent job each year to bring this big task together and all the other staff that contribute all the way along the line. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to page 48, item 12.1, the Tatchira Sports Events and Community Precinct Master Plan. There is also a recommendation on page 48. Would councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Sally?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page 48 of the agenda, item 12.1, Tatchira Sports Events and Community Precinct Master Plan.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor James? Councillor Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Look, it really is an exciting time for Tatchira and we obviously know how important Tatchira is to making Greater Shepparton so successful. And this master plan now, finally, honestly, it feels like it's been across our desk in the monthly meetings. But we obviously go from the draft to now finalising the master plan. So it's great. This will provide very strong direction, not only for the user groups of the Tap Park precinct, but also us as councillors as well. It sets really good direction as to where they want to go and we've got to try and back that up now as well. A number of really important projects will now be on the table for consideration. And already one of the highest priorities was the pedestrian crossing with the lighting between the football and netball precinct. That project is in the latest budget that we adopted tonight. So really looking forward to seeing that finalised. We also see a number of other priorities, like the main oval and eastern oval light upgrades. That will then provide, once hopefully done, provide an opportunity for Tatchira to host night entertainment, which is seen quite often here in Shepparton and Marutna as well. So all in all, I'm really happy to finally have this on the table now. I'm really sure all the user groups of the Tap Park precinct are excited to now have a sense of direction and really excited to see a number of these projects hopefully get achieved in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Yes, and as just to what councillor Sally said, Mayor Keefe was, you know, the plan has been out for public consultation for quite some time now. A number of changes to the draft have been made and considered. A detailed background report has been prepared, including a landscape master plan, summarising 39 development priorities across the site. Some of these include, as councillor Sally said, the eastern oval, the drainage, the arena fencing, light towers, upgrade to the indoor stadium, full perimeter fencing at Tatchira Park, work on the Equestrian, the Equestrians complex at Valentine Centre and many, many more. Tatchira Park has traditionally been developed on a needs basis. So this current master plan will allow and assist the council and the community in making sound business decisions to address and initiate long-term future of the facilities, which is really a process in stepping forward. Feedback was received from a number of community members during the consultation period and several changes to the plan have been considered throughout. Councillors also recognised through other associated initiatives in Tatchira that there is and continues to be considerable both in enthusiasm across the Tatchira precinct. And can I just say, Mayor Keefe, that councillor Sally, councillor Dobson and myself spent a good couple of hours, a short time, in that short period, just visiting the business sectors across in and out the Tatchira area. And it was very rewarding just having a chat to the businesses and finding out exactly the growth. And there is considerable growth in that areas and a number of new businesses that have opened too as well, which is very encouraging to see. So thank you, Mayor Keefe.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Only to say there's no budget allocation in this year, but hopefully the next budget will be able to more equitably distribute towards these plans in the future.
Thank you. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to point out again, you know, you can't say this too many times, that it went out for community consultation. That responded really well and then it's genuinely gone back and had changes made. I think this is a brilliant example of the community making their voices heard and then council offices really reflecting the community's feedback. So I think it's a really, I commend the council offices that have run this and that have really listened to what's come back and to all of the community members of Tatchira who have made their voice heard and put their thoughts out there about it. Just, you know, once again, once again, well done to all those, you know, community members and the staff involved. And I highly encourage people to keep doing that. Do more of that. Do it all the time.
Okay, thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Yeah.
Mary Keith, I've just got to make a correction to my acknowledgement in the budget. Just received a text from one of the executives to say that I've acknowledged Chris Titezal and Matt Sharp and his team for helping us with the budget. Now, of course, Matt Sharp does a magnificent job in the, in the community and does a great job running the hospital, but he doesn't do our budget, of course. And I'm referring to Matt Jarvis, of course. Apologies, Matt. Unintentional.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, councillors, we'll go to page 53, item 12.2, Contract Award Contract Number 2121 Watt Road Bridge Upgrade. There's also a recommendation on page 53. Councillor, there's also a confidential attachment to this report, which you would have all received. Would councillor like to move a motion? Would I like to move a motion, please?
Oh, I will.
Councillor Dobson?
Yes, councillor Mayor Keefe, I move that the council accept the tender submitted by Waratah Construction for a project limited for the contract 2121 Watt Road Bridge Upgrade for the lump sum price of 844,518.68 dollars, including GST, and authorize the chief exec to sign and seal the contract documents.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Presley? Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Not a lot to say on this one, Mayor Keefe. It's just that the Watts Road Bridge seems to always need constant upgrading. It was once upon a time in the old days, the back road before they sealed it between Kiala and Marutna, but it's now becoming a very well-used road. And I guess at some stage, we will have to look at removing that bridge and putting a brand-new four-lane highway over there, I suppose, by the way things are going. But until that time, we need to keep the Watts Road Bridge going and safe. The estimated value of the works is 1.5 million dollars, including design and project management. The proposed works have a capital budget allocation in the 2122 adopted budget. Not a lot more to say. It's got to be done and we've had a competitive tender situation and the details are in the papers.
Thank you very much. Councillor Presley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Just simply to say that this bridge is, what would I say, an emergency backup, if you like, for our community. And we've got to do what we can to keep it in a satisfactory condition. It's closer to the end of its life than it is the start. And council are actively turning our mind to the future with planning works for what comes next. And that's going to be very important for the community because this bridge won't last forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Yeah, I think it's great that it's come so far under the tender price that we're expecting, but I won't make a big deal out of that. Or we'll be looking at variances down the road. I just want to make it clear that if we pass this motion, the bridge is going to be more or less in the same condition without replacement for the next 10 years. So to me, this is a bit of a Band-Aid. If you'd asked us 10 years ago, before all these other major projects got spotlight, whether or not we should be replacing the bridge, the answer would be a resounding yes, including the Talamba Bridge, which potentially needs a duplicate. So it's clear to anyone who uses the bridge that it's not just an emergency backway anymore. It is a thoroughfare between two very busy centres in our municipality. And we don't want any more interruptions in terms of construction, in terms of shutdowns, in terms of blocking off emergency access. We need to actually fix this problem and not Band-Aid it. So I would urge you to not vote for this. Go back to the drawing board and perhaps we can tweak that 12.2 million that has been vaguely allocated within the budget somewhere and put that towards the Watt Bridge Road. But I know that if there's a will, there's a way. And I just don't want to look down the road and in 10 years from now, we're saying, well, why didn't the council fix it before? It's just been a headache. It's always been upgraded. It's costing us way more money than if we just fixed it in the first place. So that's my reasoning and that's why I'd be objecting today.
Thank you. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Look, I think that, yes, you know, it does need, the bridge does need some, some attention to it straight away. And I mean, I feel more comfortable driving across the Talamba Bridge than what I do across the Watt Road Bridge. And it certainly needs the, the attention to stabilise the pylons and look at that bracing of the pylons, because lots of, lots and lots of people have said to me on numerous occasions that, you know, they don't feel comfortable in driving across the bridge. And I certainly don't. And it does need addressing at the moment. And, you know, and I respectfully acknowledge councillor Summer's concerns too as well. Is that, you know, that it is a lot of money to be spending on an old bridge and therefore we should be investing in a newer bridge. But I know that, that, you know, the two new bridges are quite a considerable chunk of funding. But, you know, we did, just to get back to what I was saying, is that, yes, we do need that, that sort of, you know, community safety across that bridge. It is really, really quite, quite daunting driving across that bridge. But again, appreciate the comments made against the motion too as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Dobson, would you like your right of reply?
Certainly, Mayor O'Keefe. If we don't fix the bridge now, it'll be, we won't be able to use it at all. So as much as, you know, we all might agree that a brand-new bridge worth multi-million dollars is, is the desired result, the funding isn't available. Yet, there's a lot of work to be done in that way. So to fix the immediate problem, we need to fix this bridge.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to page 58, item 12.3, contract number 2112, Shepparton Sports and Events Centre, detailed design. There's also a recommendation on page 58. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Would someone like to move a motion, please? All together. Councillor Abdullah?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I'm just, yep. So I would like to move the motion on page 58. As, move the recommendation on page 58 as a motion.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? councillor Brophy? Councillors, just before we start, just so that you know, there is a confidential attachment to that report, which you all would have seen. Would you like to speak to the motion, councillor Abdullah?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I would like to just say that, you know, Shepparton is, Shepparton's growing reputation as the regional sporting events capital of Australia. It does call for an upgrade and revitalised, revitalisation of its existing sports and event centre. The existing facility is tired, it's inadequate for the purposes of hosting significant local or regional or even national events, sporting or other events. So that's why the, this investment on the detailed design is necessary. It is required to make this project shovel-ready and so that we can also have the estimates for our construction phase. And with those estimates, it will be possible for us to lobby hard for, for funding from state or federal governments, especially as we get closer to the federal election. So this work is important and it is necessary. None of the local firms actually bid for this detailed design, which is a bit disappointing. And I also understand that the price of $1 million for the detailed design, it looks excessive. But again, what choices do we have, I wonder? This is, I think this is the lowest price out of the eight bidders. Now, so in terms of price, yes, I do have my concern, but I do also understand the reality of the situation. The construction of this facility is going to be a fantastic addition to Greater Shepparton's attractions and its tourism. And I believe that it will give a boost to our economy with job creation and other spending during the, during the construction phase and in the operations of this facility. So overall, this project is expected to bring a huge positive economic and social outcomes. That's why I'm supporting this project. I believe that, I also believe that council should be actively looking for additional sources of revenue so that, you know, we are, we are financially strong to provide this kind of facility to our community. Yeah, so I, overall, I support the detailed design work that is here and the tender that, that has been put forward.
Very much. councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'll be supporting this particular motion because it's been a concern for quite some time that this project hasn't got up and running. So we needed to get up and running. There's been several, over the last decade, several different designs and going to and fro in regards to getting this particular project up and running. We do need, as councillor Abdullah said, we do need to be shovel-ready, particularly with both the state and federal elections next year, because it is a big-ticket item to actually get this project. We're talking tens of millions of dollars. We're not talking just a few million dollars. So we would certainly need to go into a massive partnership with, with particular state and federal, perhaps in regards to that. And we don't want one that just replaces the one that we've got. We need to be state-of-the-art in terms of the best in regional Victoria, because if we're not, we're really not in the ballpark. And it also needs to include, not just for sporting, but also for events, so that we can actually stage large events, large congregations there and be well-suited there. And it also needs to be a headquarter hub for sports administration that provides, you know, for media, for conferences, for offices, so that it does become a very pivotal point in terms of sporting excellence in the sporting precinct that we have. So I'll certainly be supporting this particular recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Spinks?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. At this point in time, I cannot support this motion and I have two important reasons why. My first reason is that I feel I have not had enough time to properly consider this item. I'm aware that compared to some of my fellow councillors, my networks may not be as broad or my knowledge on this matter may be lesser and that I may not have as much contact with the sporting community, which is completely fine, because we're meant to be nine different people in perspectives. But it does mean that on this matter, I consider myself to be the equivalent of a generic community member. And in being so, I need to learn about this project in greater detail. As it stands, I do not feel that I properly understand the community's need or appetite for this project or what community consultation has been undertaken and how recently, or why this project needs to be this cost and scale. This is not to say that it isn't necessary, but I cannot in good conscience support this decision without being able to answer these questions, which leads to my second reason, that I do not support this massive spend of ratepayer money at this time on this project. $1 million can do an awful lot of good for our community members. Looking at it strategically from a larger perspective, there is so much good that we can do on the ground for our community. And I don't want a flashy council with all the best stuff. I want a region that's filled with happy people, reaching their potential and living fulfilled lives and having access to everything they need. Just for a second, imagine if the community houses didn't have to ask for $5,000 extra in a budget submission, and instead we're talking about giving them $1 million. Or we spent the $1 million on running a basketball programme for every school student. Or we're talking about half of the Missing Links Project or housing or school readiness or, you know, so many other things. We are well aware that our pool of resources can only stretch so far. And having inherited this project from over 20 years of council, I have a couple of very important questions. Should a priority from 20 years ago still be a priority today in this form? Is this project for the benefit of our local sport? If yes, what would be the comparative benefit of spending the money on our local clubs instead? If no, are we prioritising those outside of Greater Shepparton instead of locals? And most importantly, is this project a high enough priority for our ratepayers today? And is it how we should be spending their money? And until I have those answers, I cannot support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I think in view with the sporting precinct that's in that all-important hub in that area, and there's lots and lots of new initiatives which occur, which are occurring in that hub too as well. So the upgrade of the stadium is, will obviously complement and enhance the, the current programmes there. I think we are, you know, we need to also take in consideration that, you know, the sports in this area, and particularly in particular basketball, has returned a very healthy economy financially, financial economy to, to the Shepparton Council. And, you know, the, you're talking about $1 million in, you know, compared to the overall cost of the project. It is, it is a lot of money, but when you're spending, you know, quite a large amount on the, on the project, it isn't, you know, it's not that much. And, you know, the, the successful tender that we are going to agree on has, has quite a lengthy amount of experience over, you know, close to 20 years' experience working in sporting, in that sporting field and has been, you know, responsible for designing sporting clubs, sporting stadiums right across Victoria and Australia. So, you know, the tender that we, we have chosen or continuing on choosing is quite an experienced tender and looking, looking forward to what the new design will look like and the whole complex. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Sally?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. Yeah, look, I acknowledge the fact that over a million dollars for a detailed design is, is obviously a lot of money, but it's a significant investment for a significant project. And our current sports stadium is effectively just that. This detailed design, once completed, will provide greater opportunity for us to seek potential financial support to help us make this the ultimate sport and events destination. Greater Shepparton is best placed to hold a variety of events, and we've seen that with so many successful events already taking place in the Shepparton Sports Precinct. My opinion, this is next level. It's clearly been spoken about for so long. It's a genuine game changer and I really do hope that hopefully, once we finalise this and we progress forward, that this will be finally the first step, arguably the most important step, to having this project achieved in the very, very near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Summer?
Yeah, I'm not really for or against. I'm definitely for the project. It has been spoken about for a long time. Sports are integral in our community. I'd love to see a new sports stadium in a council term that I'm, that I'm involved in. So that's very exciting. Certainly not bagging the project. It's just $1 million. The design does seem excessive. And if we're basing that and justifying that $1 million on the amount of the project rather than how much work is going to be done in designing it, I think perhaps that's a little bit flawed. Even in the report, there seemed to be a fair bit of room to move in terms of contingencies and 5% here and 5% there. $1 million is a lot of money and we could potentially tighten that up. So we don't necessarily have to accept this tender. We can go back and negotiate, tighten some bolts, see what they can come back with in terms of, yeah, if they, if they really want to design this. Just seems like a lot of money, all for the project. But, yeah, perhaps if there were comparable design projects that other councils or other people have done with a million-dollar budget and I could compare those, which I think was discussed, I'd feel more comfortable about it. But as it stands, I think it's just too much money for a design, personally.
Okay, thank you. Would any other councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I just want to make the point that this is, you know, it's not just about some basketball courts. This is really a kind of a visionary project for our city. And it really, you know, when you ask yourself, what do we want to do and who do we want to be as a, as a regional centre? This is really capacity building for our region. It allows us to host major events and major cultural events that are going to be attractive to the youth of our region. And for me, that's a really a centrepiece to us getting our demographics right into the future. If we want to attract and retain young people in our region, we need to be able to offer the types of cultural events that, that appeals to those people. And we currently don't have a venue that's capable of doing that. To go to the, to the cost of this, we're in a pretty hot infrastructure economy at the moment. We've got eight bidders, I think it is, on this particular tender. And in the end, this is the cheapest one. There's plenty of work around and we, you know, all you can do is test the market. You can't force someone to do it for cheaper if they've got better alternatives. And, and ultimately, when you look at the percentage of the design costs relative to the cost of the, potential cost of the project, it's in keeping with normal, normal commercial design costs for, for a project of this style and scale. So yes, yes, it is a lot of money. But for me, it is absolutely a priority for the community. And this can be something that really sets up our community for a bigger and better future.
Very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? I think everyone has spoken. Prior to going to the vote, I'd also like to make a comment, is that Basketball Victoria have acknowledged this has been their number one priority in regional Victoria as needing a fit-for-purpose stadium. So I'm actually really excited to think we're finally, you know, moving forward with this because the community has been asking for this for a very long time. The building was built in 1972 and it still looks like 1972 era. So I think it's an incredibly important opportunity, an incredibly important project. And I think as we've all discussed, you know, we are known as a regional capital, if not, you know, Australia, we're getting international events. We need to have those opportunities. We're missing out now, as we speak. We will no longer be getting those national events at our basketball stadium. But it's more than a basketball stadium. To many, that's the priority. But to many in the community, it's going to offer so much more than that. A 3,000, you know, seated show court, seated exhibition, place where people can come in and have concerts and lots of things within that, within that space. I think it's terribly exciting. It's a very big build. But in saying that, we need to complete that project, that Sports City project. And the stadium is the last piece of the puzzle. So I'm actually really happy to think, you know, we've got more discussion happening as we speak, that there's some design going to be pending. And let's just get on with the job now because our community wants this and they deserve it. All right, councillor Abdullah, sorry, who do we have here? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to have your right of reply?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just quickly, I think other councillors have also summed it up very well in terms of some of the concerns that councillor Spinks has raised. Now, in terms of community consultation, we know that this, this particular project has been in our, has been an aspiration for the whole community. It was included in the Ask of Government document, which is our key document when we lobby and advocate for projects. It's a document that a council prepares in consultation with many community groups and organisations, including Committee for Greater Shepparton and other such organisations. So it is something that, that, you know, it's not only council that has come up with this idea. It's, it reflects the whole, the community's aspirations very broadly. And also, I believe that this, this is, as others have pointed out, that this is not only about sports, it's a visionary project. It's, we are not doing it for the sake of sports only. It is going to benefit people. It's going to benefit, you know, the health and social, industry health and social outcomes, in addition to the economic outcomes, of course. And councillor Spinks, it is, I also believe that we need to, council, as I've said before, that council needs to, to be creative about it, about its sources of revenue. And I feel that if we, if we do it right, we will be, we will be, we will be adding a source of revenue in the whole scheme of things. And that additional revenue will actually benefit the very communities that you are talking about. And it would help council to deliver services in a way that our community expects and needs. So I believe that this project, looking at, looking at different angles, it is, it's a very significant project and hence I would support that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors will now go to page 62, item 12.4, contract number 2101, Deacon Reserve Civil Works. There is also a recommendation on page 62. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Sally?
Thank you, Mayor O'Keefe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page 62 of the agenda, item 12.4, contract number 2101, Deacon Reserve Civil Works.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Counselor Presley? Counsel Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mary O'Keefe. Very briefly, look, unfortunately, variations is something us councillors are seeing far too often in our first six months or so of being elected. I know councillor Brophy doesn't think too highly of them either, but this variation came about due to some design issues, the findings of asbestos and other services that unfortunately were not picked up in the pre-examined work of the site. From the discussions we have had about this item in briefings is that anytime we go digging around very old but active sites, unfortunately, we're gonna sometimes find some services that that weren't identified there. Gladly, everything's been rectified. We're moving forward. The precinct is now open and effective, especially for those user groups down there, especially Shepherd and United. They were heavily impacted with entry to their side of the ground, so we've got past the major hurdle there and obviously now much more open and free space for the community.
Thank you very much. Counsel Presley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. Look, like councillor Sally points out, nobody enjoys unexpected variations, be that a bathroom renovation at home or a major capital project like this. It it's not a good thing. Having said that, you know, I guess a bit of perspective that in the commercial world, these things happen. It's just that they don't have to be broadcast to the whole of the community. And as I work every day in the commercial world, the the types of variations and the issues that I see arise at council are like the types of things that I see happen in private industry. In this case, the the appearance of asbestos and some some other unexpected aged services under the courts have have resulted in this, and they're things that would be difficult to foresee when when you're putting this project together. The only other comment I would say is that of all the things that I say at council, the scrutiny that the the executive come under for variations is is probably the most intense discussions that we have. So as a community, you can be assured that there's plenty of concentration discussion on this topic and probably apologies in arrears to the executive and staff for the amount of hate that they cop on this topic. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. But any council wish to speak against the motion? Counsel Summer?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. I am fifty-eight percent in favor of this recommendation of this motion. So as far as the asbestos goes, that's completely unavoidable. As far as what the brownfield site showed and stuff under the ground, completely unavoidable. Design issues and what we've tacked on in terms of footpathing and things, no! You do not get to a variation stage that you have to get to and then say, hey, let's add a bunch of stuff. Like, that should have been worked out at the beginning. And if it wasn't worked out at the beginning, it needs to be done in a way that doesn't cost us another thirty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. So, no, I do not agree with this. We we say we're being tight on variations, but every time there's variation, there's that little bit of cherry on the on the milkshake, whatever it is. There's just, I I don't, I don't like it. If there's a variation, it should only be for the bare essentials because otherwise it should have been addressed at the time of the tender. So I'm gonna take a stance on this, and further on, when there's more variations, I'll probably have the same stance because I get very frustrated when when it's variation, 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 and in this case, a third of it are the things that that are our fault. We should have sorted it out at the beginning, or, you know, I don't know. Look, I'm just against this. So, thank you.
Any council wish to speak for the motion? Counsel Brophy?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. I couldn't let this one go. I am speaking for it, but with great reluctance. And the reluctance is my learned councillors have already brought up, and thank you, councillor Sally and councillor Presley, in regards to, in the commercial world, that does happen. We're in a public world where we're scrutinised, and we're scrutinised as councillors as we scrutinise the council offices. And you're not wrong, we actually really take the executive to task over the these particular variations. So it's not a happy thing when they do come up, and, you know, you look at it, and certainly for unforeseen earthworks, and when you get when you do dig down, there are unforeseen things, and you do have to expect variation in that. No question at all about that. But when when it is maybe the poor design or poor management, that's when it really, you know, really gets up my goat because we need to make sure that, you know, there is a a public expectation that, you know, when a budget's put together, when a tender's put out, when it's actually delivered, it comes in on time, in on budget, and as close as the mark as it can get, with a few variations if it really needs to, which is unforeseen. But I will reluctantly pass it because we need to, and it is, like, the actual project itself, fantastic, really good and really supportive of it. But in terms of the variation, no, not happy.
Thank you very much. Any council wish to speak against the motion? Any council wish to speak for the motion? Would you like your right of reply, councillor Sally?
Very briefly, thank you, Mary O'Keefe, but I'll just back up the comments that councillor Presley's mentioned and councillor Brophy, which in line does support what you've mentioned, councillor Summer, that there is a very, very big expectation that we have raised a lot of concern and made a lot of noise regarding the variations that get presented to us. And I think there is a clear expectation from us councillors that we don't want to see this to be a regular occurrence. We understand it does happen when it's out of our control. But when it is relatively something that we can control, we, I can't accept this moving forward. So as a starting point, we've set a pretty strong precedent of where we want to go in this space, and I'm looking forward to things tightening up a lot more better than what perhaps they have been. Thank you.
Now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? It's motion carried. Councillors will now go to page sixty-six, item twelve point five, improved project deliverable scope, Route Five Broken River Pedestrian Bridge to Australian Botanic Gardens. There's also a recommendation on page sixty-six. Would a council like to move a motion, please? Councillor Dobson?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. I move that the council approve the variation of four hundred and nineteen seven nine nine point zero nine, including GST dollars. The contract two double oh nine, design and construction of Route Five Pedestrian Bridge and associated works to include additional connecting paths and boardwalk, and authorise the chief executive officer to sign the contract variation order and make payment where the works are completed, when the works are completed.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Counsel Spinks? Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
I don't know whether variation is the right word because I'm hesitant to use it, seeing that everybody's against variation. But this is more of an addition. When you look at the plan, we've got the the walking path that's at the Broken River Bridge or the Broken River, that new bridge that's going over the Broken River. And if you look south of the Botanic Gardens along the roadway there, there's a connecting, there's a connecting path, and that's going right down to the south. But the the bit in the middle where the Botanic Gardens is, is it's been deemed to be below flood level. And the authorities are telling us that we've got to put a pedestrian walkway that will be above any known flood level. And this is what this amount of money is going to do. So we have received a grant towards shared path upgrades. And we've got to put in some money ourselves, but this is, this is what must be done on this one, rather than oh, we put out the wrong amount of money. It will be a great asset to to Greater Shepparton once it's done. Because the people that are really more and more going from the south or residing in the south of Shepparton will have direct path, direct bicycle and walking access to the middle of town, as I said. The works will include some project management, engineering, design, footings, posts, bearers, and bracing, et cetera, et cetera, timber joists and concrete piers. There's a hundred and eleven litres of waterside boardwalk within the, with with decking and wire balustrades. And it'll be quite smart. In fact, if you go along the Galvan River behind where the where some of the government walkway is, you'll see that sort of ridgework there o- over and above the floodway. So this is just to connect the two paths, and and I'd like to, and I'd like to suggest that it's a it's a good project.
Thank you very much. Counsel Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Just briefly, this is the good kind of variation. The money's already allocated, and the project as it was designed came in under budget, which was a real novelty. And essentially, we couldn't give the money back, so we've reallocated it to more of the project, which in is actually going to be incredible in that it's going to connect all the way through Kiala up to the CBD. And the connectivity of our shared paths is an incredible thing for our region to have. It makes us more connected, more active. It gives families and individuals a chance to get out and about safely off the roads and to enjoy our beautiful environment that we have in this wonderful part of the world. So it's, I highly support this. I think it's fantastic. And the fact that it's not actually costing us anymore is a real bonus.
Very much. Would any council wish to speak against the motion? Would a council wish to speak to the motion? Counselor James?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. Yeah, it's, you know, it's it's about improving the connectivity from Route Five to also to other routes too as well, and as councillor Dobson and councillor Spinks had said, that, yes, it is, this is going to be a great investment for down the path in regards to pathways and accessibility. But, you know, can I just say that there was healthy debate about this at the council table, at our briefing structures, and and certainly myself, coming from a building and construction background, I did question the amount of money which it's, which is intended to spend. But, you know, because suspended bridges and et cetera, is there is a lot of money in regards to steelwork and timberwork in that process, and I'm happy to support this recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any other council wish to speak to the motion? Counsel Summer?
I'm gonna be a bit of a hypocrite here, speaking for a variance after what I just said, except councillor Spinks is on the money. It's not actually adding things in. It's a bit of leftover bucket money from a grant. And I'm not a hundred percent convinced that there's no matching funds from our side to go into this, but eventually we would have had to expend it. There's efficiencies in bringing two projects together. I know the community want this because we heard it loud and clear through the last few years and the election. So in terms of my, maybe my own personal bias, I'll take a hiatus from the position I just said, in terms of all variations, and support this particular one in in the context of which it is.
Thank you very much. Any council wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page seventy-one, item thirteen point one, new business grant for Heidi Blooms. There's also a recommendation on page seventy-one. Would a council like to move a motion, please? Counsel Sally?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. I'll move the recommendation as a motion on page seventy-one of the agenda, item thirteen point one, new business grant, Heidi Blooms.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Presley? Counsel Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. The new business grant is open year-round with a total budget of thirty thousand dollars available, with applicants able to apply for a maximum of ten thousand dollars with a one-to-one dollar matching investment. Council officers have assessed one application for funding. The successful applicant was Heidi Blooms, which is a boutique florist in McLennan Street, Marutna. The business owner is Lauren Kiss. She will receive three and a half thousand dollars excluding GST. So well done to Lauren on being successful and for investing into a new business and choosing Marutna to make that investment as well. So, well done.
Thank you very much. Counselor Presley, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. Just supporting councillor Sally's comments and extending a warm welcome to Lauren and her business to the thriving business community of Marutna.
Thank you very much. Would any council wish to speak against the motion? Would any council wish to speak to the motion? Just prior to going to the vote, I think it's really great to see new businesses taking that leap of faith at the moment. It's great to see the community supporting them. I know that this new business, I saw them on Facebook the other day, has had a lot of community support, so let's keep it up. Let's, you know, really work hard to keep that happening in our community, support the local businesses and, you know, keeping them thriving. But I think we've had eleven new businesses in the past few months across Greater Shepparton, and that's actually really exciting. Right, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page seventy-five, item thirteen point two, minor and major event grants, round two for twenty twenty-one. There is also a recommendation on page seventy-five. Would a council like to move a motion, please? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. I'd love to move the thirteen point two on page seventy-five, minor and major events grants, round two, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Spinks? Councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. I don't think there's any need for me to read all of the successful applicants out. If you, I'm happy to if you want, but there were eighteen total. Our council each year offered two funding rounds for community events. These grants are open to not-for-profit groups to assist them. In this second round, we received eight applicants, of which five groups received minor funding between two five hundred dollars and two thousand dollars, and three groups received major funding between two thousand and five thousand dollars. A dedicated council officer, events officer, will be assigned to each applicant to assist them with their COVID requirements for the safety. All of the community groups that applied do a fantastic job in our community, Mary O'Keefe, and and are worthy recipients, of course. Overall, the number of applicants were down compared to to last year, to previous years. And obviously, that is due to the COVID pandemic. So worthy recipients in our community, man. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Just briefly, to once again, be so excited at the array of events that we are able to contribute a little bit to. There are eight different types of events, purposes of events, you know, cultures and groups and locations, and it's it's incredible that we have these things happening across our municipality and that we can support them in this small way. And certainly, I'm sure I speak for everybody when we say we'll try and get to as many as we can.
Thank you very much. Would any council wish to speak against the motion? Would a council wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page eighty-one, item thirteen point three, the Spring Car Nationals Future Support. There is also a recommendation on page eighty-one. Would a council like to move a motion, please? Counsel Brophy?
Thank you, Mary O'Keefe. I would actually like to move an alternative motion to what was publicised, please. And I'll read that out to the councillors and to those listening. Be with me for one moment. The recommendation that I would like to put forward is that the council authorised the chief executive officer to sign a new event venue agreement in line with the additional event requirements outlined in this report to support the Spring Car Nationals event in Greater Shepparton for a further five years from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six with the additional inclusion of four thousand dollars each year to support the street parade.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, then? Counsel Sally?
Yeah, thank you, Mary O'Keefe. I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Counsel Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Look, I I certainly will because obviously it was different than the recommendation that was put forward. So the Spring Car Nationals are an asset to Greater Shepparton, and a really long-established event. For twenty-seven years, in fact, drawing thousands of visitors annually to the event. It's an incredible economic activity for the region. And, you know, we are, you know, a key event centre in Greater Shepparton, and also a motoring and sporting hub. In line also with the Museum of the Vehicle Evolution, which is coming on board as well. You know, well supports, you know, our credentials in regards to motor events. Heading towards a thirty-year anniversary, it's had its detractors and certainly had its challenges over the period of time. But Les Adams and the coordinators of the event have modified, have modernised, and have adapted to the to a number of changes. And I congratulate them on this. Moving forward, my recommendation ensures that the event is for a further five years beyond this year. It also ensures that the event funding from the council to make sure that the vehicle parade continues as well. And it's and and also logistical support in the form of, be with me for one moment, in the And it's, and also logistical support in the form of, be with me for one moment, in the form of... Sorry. So in-kind support in terms of traffic management, plan development, implementation at the showgrounds facility, road closure advertising, hire and installation of temporary fencing, delivery of additional temporary grandstands, delivery of ticket boxes and a number of other logistical items that we can support them in regards to that as well. I applaud the willingness of the Spring Car Nationals committee to work with local government, to work with local businesses and also to work with our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sally, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. And obviously councillor Brophy has put it perfectly. And I'm also a massive supporter of this event. And I'm really glad an alternative motion was put up this evening. Les and the team at AutoFest for so many years now provided our region with an event that has a point of difference. And good, bad or otherwise, when the Spring Nats is on, our community knows about it. To see something unique get over the hurdles that have been put in front of them and to see this event, as councillor Brophy mentioned, hopefully in a couple of years, celebrate 30 years. I mean, what an astounding effort. I mean, it's unprecedented. This obviously provides a huge return to our business community. Obviously, our tourist aspect as well is huge. So I'm really looking forward to seeing this event evolve over the, like they have. You know, if we all remember it how it was, well, I don't remember it 30 years ago, but most of you would. But I remember it in its so-called glory days. And it's evolved and it's still such a successful event. So I'm really seeing, looking forward to seeing how it evolves further into the next five years.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. I am happy to support this motion and support this event, which is, you know, which is fantastic. And we have, and we have seen that this event has evolved over the years. It is now considered to be an important family event. So I really, I wish them all the best and I wish them to achieve a 50-year milestone, which would be great. It does bring, as others have noted, it does bring positive social and economic outcomes, no doubt about this. I just want to highlight a couple of points from the environment point of view, taking into consideration some environmental aspects. The report that, that is here, in front of us, it has outlined that EPA has confirmed that this event doesn't fall under their control because it's a once-a-year event and it's not considered as a shared dual premise as confirmed in the EPA regulations. So just wanted to clarify that what it means is that it is now council and not EPA that is responsible to manage and control the environmental aspects of this event. If you would recall previously, whenever there were some complaints around noise and smoke pollution during the event, there were, there was a lack of clarity around whose role was it to monitor and control this aspect. So with this, this confusion has now been removed, as the report highlights. And EPA does not have a role due to a technical point that by legislation, this event doesn't fall under their remit. However, council has a role now and council's role to monitor the emissions from the burnout competition. It is absolutely necessary. We want to ensure that it remains within the health and safety standards. So I would hope that this point is also emphasised in the, in the contract. And I also believe that it is important for council to have an ongoing review for a reduction of emissions from the burnout competition because it is going to be in line with our, with our declaration of climate emergency. So these are the two points I wanted to highlight. Other than that, I am fully supportive of this event. So well done.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer? You're on mute.
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Sorry. Spring Nats has been around for as long as I can remember. It's, we are in an enviable position in terms of events and in terms of positioning us as a leader in all things motor, in terms of regional Victoria. We are so lucky to have it. We should be supporting these guys 100% of the way. Look, I'm not a big car enthusiast, but I love the atmosphere during Spring Nats. I can't imagine Shep without it. So to try and pull back on, on some things and put more restrictions on other things just is a death by a thousand cuts. So I really commend this group of councillors if this motion goes through. One, for having the bravery to stand up for what they believe the community want. And two, for delivering a huge economic surplus to the region in COVID time when small businesses are suffering. So this is huge, the amount that they've, it was something like, like millions of dollars all coming through just because of these couple of days. So I appreciate some people might not like the noise, they might not like the burnouts, they might not like the idea of it. But even that dissent adds to the culture of Spring Nats. It's something to talk about. It's stuff to do. It's vibrant, it's alive, it roars. So yeah, bring on Spring Nats. Can't wait for the anniversary and I hope there's many, many, many years to come. So full support from me.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. I just want to add my voice of support to this event. There are members of our community that don't participate in many of the services and the entertainment offerings that emanate from council. And this is one that really taps into a local cult following. And it's a really, really important event for those, those families. And the other thing is that, you know, it fits very well with the tourism offering of our community with the new Museum of Vehicle Evolution soon to be opened in Shepparton. You know, we've got that opportunity for a bit of motoring tourism. So congratulations to those that have pulled this together and hopefully bigger and better.
Very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? So just prior to going to the vote, I would just like to congratulate Les and also thank him and his team for being so accommodating. You know, they certainly have wanted to work with council. It's been pointed out also with businesses and the community. And they have, you know, tweaked the event that made the street parade later in the day. So it doesn't impact on shoppers on the Saturday morning. They had an incredible amount of people turn up at that last time, I said, from pretty much showgrounds right into the mall. The streets were lined. A lot of those people, you know, got free entertainment, something we don't have enough of. So, you know, well done to Les and let's keep continuing those conversations. He definitely wants to make this event bigger and better and broaden it, you know, make it something a little bit different perhaps in the future as well. So, you know, well done. And we're really looking forward to seeing this event being very successful again as it has been thus. All right, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to page 87, documents for signing and sealing. We had Neil received. On page 88, confidential management reports, 15.1. We've already talked about those. Yep, sorry, we've already had a look at those. Item 16, councillor report. So item 16.1, you have councillor activities for May 2021. And there is a recommendation on page 89, the council would like to move a motion. Councillor Spinks?
Thanks, Mayor Keefe. I will move as the recommendation to a motion that the council receive and note the summary of the councillors' community interaction briefing programme and record of assemblies of councillors.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Someone like to second that? Councillor Priestley? Councillor Spinks, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, you know, the month has gone by. We've been out and about doing lots of things. Our mayor, of course, representing us wonderfully. There is a huge range of events, meetings, groups that the variety of us have participated in. We even snuck one in just before the latest round of COVID hit, which was wonderful, embracing reconciliation week or participating in. And it's just another amazing example of the incredible things happening across our municipality. It's also a wonderful way to let the community know what we've been up to. You can see what we're, we're talking about, we're learning about and what we are spending our time doing, I suppose. So it's transparency at its best and it's community, being a part of community.
Thank you very much. Councillor Priestley, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, I'll just echo councillor Spinks's comments.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would a councillor wish to speak to the motion? Prior to going to the vote, I just want to say well done too to the councillors that are having the opportunity to get to so many events. And we know some of you work full-time, so well done to the events you can get to. But I'm certainly seeing such a great attendance and the community are loving it. So well done to my fellow councillors. Let's hope we can get back out there very soon. It's starting to rev up again. Let's hope we can get back out amongst the community and it's no better space for us to be in it's amongst the community. We get so much conversation out of it. All right, we'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to page 91, councillor committee reports, item 16.2. The first report, report on the National Conference Murray Darling Association Wentworth, the 16th to the 19th of May, 2021. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Yes, I'd like to move the recommendation 16.2.1, which reads that the council note councillor Dobson's report on the Murray River Darling Association's National Conference in Wentworth from the 16th to the 19th of May, 2021.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, then? Councillor Dobson? Councillor James, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Firstly, can I, can I say a thank you to councillor Dobson for his presence and attendance at the National Conference in Wentworth? Extremely important for our region to have this representation on the Murray Darling Association. I would like, I would like also to, to thank our council for adopting the motion, which was, which councillor Dobson presented at the National Conference in supporting the process to promote greater representation of First Nations people in local government. It was an honour for me to, to speak of the motion on behalf of our council about my experiences and as a newly appointed councillor and how important it is to involve First Nations people in all important decisions on water and all its usage for stakeholders. So, so a very, very important decision in regards to empowering. I think there's over 40 traditional owners that use, that use land and waterways, which obviously councillor Dobson and councillor Priestley would have experienced on their trip. So, so this, this motion was very important in regards to First Nations people in regards to empowering, empowering them at the localised level. So great opportunity for me to, to speak to that motion in the great company of councillor Dobson, of course. But just finally thank our council for that opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion? You're on mute. You're still on mute?
There we go. There's two actions from this, and I thank councillor James for his very kind words. There's a bit of a disconnect between the North and the South and I'll speak to that more in the next, in the next issue. But I'd like to, I'd like us to be sending invitations to Northern Basin local government people to visit us, to see what we do, to see where our challenges lie and what we've been doing to help the Murray Darling Basin. And the second is that we need to encourage more of our neighbouring councils to become a part of Region Two of the Murray Darling Association. It's very important that Greater Shepparton becomes or retains to be, or remains to be a major player in Region Two of the Murray Darling Association. A very important meeting. No need to go into the whole detail. It's in the report.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would councillor wish to speak to the motion? Trying to go into the vote. I think that's a fantastic report. Thank you so much for that, councillor Dobson. Well done. We'll go to the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to page 93, item 16.2, Water and Truth, the Darling River Tour, 11th to 18th of April, 2021. And there is also a recommendation on page 93. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Brophy?
Thank you, Mayor Keefe. Want to move the, remove, remove. Can I move the recommendation that council note councillor Dobson's report on the Murray Darling, Murray River Darling Association National Conference at Wentworth from the 16th to the 19th of May. Oh, hang on, wrong one. I'm on the next one, aren't we? No, that's the right one. Yep. 16th to the 19th of May, 2021.
11th to the 18th.
It's the wrong recommendation.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Second, we just have a point of clarification. Is it the 16th to the, no, it's the 11th to the 18th?
I'm going what's written here. Yeah.
Just a point of clarification. What date is it, Geoff?
No, it should be that the council note councillor Dobson's report on, on the Water and Truth Darling River Tour of the 11th to 18th of April. Yeah, there's a mistyping in there. My apologies.
Okay, so the recommendations.
Yes, I put forward that recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a second, then? Councillor Dobson? Councillor Brophy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I will. In regards to the Darling River Tour that councillor Dobson undertook with a number of other local people as well, prominent people, people who knew the, know our industry, our water industry, irrigation, dairy representatives, politicians, media converged on the, on the, on the Darling River Tour. People like Russell Powell, who knows water back the front. People like Susannah Shee, who's been with GMID and been really pushing and advocating for our particular area. And of course councillor Dobson. I absolutely thank councillor Dobson for putting this particular report together. I've read it. It really puts me in the picture of, you know, day to day, what you undertook and what you saw. Obviously with councillor Priestley as well. But just reading through that, I'm really looking forward, actually, to the red carpet opening from the film crew who's put something together as well to see, you know, what it actually physically looks like up on the screen. But thank you for putting that together. It really puts us in the picture of where we are and what challenges there are in the Murray Darling.
Thank you so much. Councillor Dobson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would. And I'd just like to thank and recognise councillor Rob Priestley for being my travelling companion. And his insights into the water industry certainly helped me along the way. I want to go through the report, but just a couple of comments that I'd make. And councillor Priestley may want to back me up or knock me over in this one. But whatever happens at the top of the Darling River, be it in the Guider or Catchment or the Colgar or the Balone River Catchments, affects Greater Shepparton. And the reason is this, is that those catchments which emanate from the top of the Great Divide, they feed into the Darling River. But they're not, they're an intermittent flow into the Darling River, not like the Goulburn River in, it's very shepherded. And so it's not, and that is why the Darling River sometimes stops flowing in the old days because there wasn't enough water going around. But what's happening now is that there's been a lot of off-take. They call it floodplain harvesting up in that area. Covey Station, for example, comes to mind as a big cotton grower. And they take the water legally because their state governments allow them to do it. And through the New South Wales and Queensland state governments, they are allowed to take that water. And my premise is this, is that the Darling River cannot afford to have all of that water taken at its source because the water that comes down the Darling River, the water that comes down the Murray River and the water that comes down the Goulburn River also supports not only us, but South Australia as well. So if the Darling River hasn't got any water in it and the Murray River is, has got a problem with the Barmer choke and they can't get enough water downstream to South Australia, it means that the Goulburn River has got to be the provider of water far beyond its expectations. And that is what is happening. So not only are we providing irrigation water for the Goulburn Murray area, but we're also piping it over to the Malley, we're piping it to Bendigo and we're piping it to Ballarat. And so, and we're also piping it to Melbourne, if you might remember about a few years when that, that pipe was open. So I, my view is that we've got to really take an holistic view of the Darling River and come as one, not just individual and and come as one, not just individual and, and separate entities taking water off the river. It's a crying shame to see what's happened to the river and the river in confines in the Lower Darling. It, it really is distressing, and it shouldn't be like that. The people up north, look, they're only doing what they're allowed to do. And so my suggestion is that we get behind the Murray Darling Association, get behind our local governments. Thank you, just one moment. Get behind our local governments and try and get change. And the first part of that change may well be that we entertain councils from St George, the municipality of St George, and Maori, and the irrigators up there to let them know what we're, what our challenges and our problems are, and how we all should work together. It's a big issue, and we're right in the middle of it. And this council has got to take a big part in it. Thank you, Mayor Keith.
Thank you very much. Councillor Dobson, would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Priestley?
Thank you, Mayor Keith. Before I headed off on this journey with councillor Dobson, I was pondering three and a half thousand kilometres with him in the car, and wondered whether or not we'd have enough to talk about. Well, councillor Dobson admirably filled the void. There was no periods of silence. There was plenty of discussion. We covered full history of the council. Onto, onto more serious matters, his, his report. This is a great initiative of our local member Susannah Sheed, pulling together some really good minds on water and going with an open mind and following the river and going into the irrigation districts in the North. Now, this has been invaluable for me, and what I've come away with is a really solid understanding. You know, you're standing on the banks of the Darling River in the lower part, and talking to families that have been there for generations and seeing the transformation. You're seeing centuries old, five hundred year old gum trees that are really under great stress because of the mismanagement of that river. So we've got an environmental catastrophe happening on the Darling River. And then you travel into the North, which is an area I know well, I worked up there twenty odd years ago, and you can see a transformation of the landscape that is astonishing in terms of the amount of earthworks and the amount of water capture that is going on. So, but however that it has arrived, it's going to result in an environmental catastrophe for the Darling River. And ultimately, for our community, the water that is being captured in that part of the world is not flowing to the Maori and having to be replaced from this part of the world. So it's having a huge economic consequence for our, our community here. And then the last piece of the puzzle is when we're travelling around and you're talking to people, and there's this, this moment that I really vividly remember, we're talking to the Barkinji at the Menindee Lakes, and coming to the understanding that for some species of fish, eighty percent of the fish that you might catch here in the Galvan have bred or spent time in those Menindee Lakes, thousands of kilometres away by river. It is one large connected system, and we're all treating it as though our own valley is independent and isolated and not connected. It is connected. We've got to start treating it like that, or we are going to have major, major problems, and our community is going to pay for it more than others. So we need to be on the front foot. Councillor Dobson, great, great effort, great report, and well done to our local member for pulling it together, Susannah Sheed.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Sally?
Thank you, Mayor Keith. Look, I wasn't lucky enough to go on the trip, so my response now won't be as detailed as councillor Dobson and Priestley. But I just want to add further comment to what's already been mentioned here. And I remember it so vividly, and it wasn't that long ago in November, where councillor Dobson was very eager to sit on the Murray Darling Association committee and represent our community, our council. And I mean, these, these reports, I mean, you know, I'm going to have to foreshadow myself as continually acknowledging this each month and the effort that he goes into and the commitment that he shows to this major issue. Water security is huge. Obviously councillor Priestley has now experienced that at another level as well. So councillor Dobson, well done, mate. Really appreciate the effort you're putting in for all of us here, and also to you, Rob, as well, by experiencing some long travels with councillor Dobson. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, Mayor Keith. Just quickly, I, I echo councillor Sally's sentiments, and he's absolutely right. Thank you. I think we really want to say thanks to councillor Dobson, because, you know, you have, you are such an active member of this association, and you bring the knowledge back to us, which is so valuable. And I just want to acknowledge that the, the work that you are doing in terms of keeping us in the loop, and, and water is such a complex issue. And to sort of make sure that we are also, you know, we also have that information and you educate us. So thank you so much. And thanks to councillor Priestley as well for, for accompanying councillor Dobson on this tour and your insights that you bring to us. I think together we really need to be more educated, more informed on this issue. And as, as councillor Dobson has said, we need to talk more to other parts of the, of this system, river system, so that we understand the, the, the whole issue and the totality of this issue. So that's very important. So once again, thanks very much councillor Dobson for your work and the reports that you bring back to us.
Thank you. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mayor Keith. I'm not going to throw any more accolades on councillor any, any further than what councillors have done. I'm just agreeing with Envy on both, both councillor Dobson and councillor Priestley on their trip up North. And I think it would be really in the best interest of this council if we actually do have an annual, make it an annual trip up, up to North, just to have a look at the start of the water flow and where it comes to. But, but obviously, it was a great opportunity for both councillors to actually look at in the Menindee area and talking to the Indigenous elders and just to, to get a sense of how important it is for Indigenous people, First Nations people in regards to connection to the water and connection to the country, and how much of a vital, essential part of life that is. And, and to see, you know, the rivers running dry up North, and to see that if that would happen down here in our community, and how detrimental that would be to all river users here. So it's really important that, you know, we get a perspective of the vital, you know, appreciation of water and what it means to, to Indigenous, First Nations people, but to everyone in regards to that life cycle. So a great trip, and I think that this council should, you know, we should look at seriously about having an annual trek up there too as well for next year. Take another group with us.
Thank you very much. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? So just prior to going to the vote, I think it's so important we keep a loud voice in this space as well. You know, council has such a strong role to play, and you know, the likes of Geoff and Rob, you know, really put their hand up and, you know, commit to that trip. It was, it was big ask. Well done, and we really appreciate it. But I think it's such a strong message that we are actually in this space, and we need to continue to be, to fight, you know, for our community when it comes to Murray Darling River someplace. So let's keep that voice loud and clear, and let's continue to fight and do as much as we can for our community and, and further. All right, we'll go for the vote. All those in favour? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to page ninety seven, item sixteen point three, notice with motion amended or rescission, nil received. Item seventeen, urgent business not included on the agenda, nil received. And I will now declare the meeting closed at five thirty six. Thank you very much, everyone.